I moved to pay in the amount of $227,823.40 payroll and liabilities for September 29, 17, in the amount of $532,291.37, for a total of $760,114.77.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I do, actually. And I think we visited about this just a little bit before the meeting, but I was hoping to get some more detail on the credit card statement. This is page 22 regarding the fraudulent charges paid up to FedEx, and then it looks like there were also some paid to Amazon, Dyno8, and then some of them were refunded, it looks like, but some haven't been yet. Can you tell me just a little bit about that?
Sure. So there were, there were two cards that were compromised last month on the credit card bill. One of them was a credit card that was used for IT, which were the Amazon charges. We were actually contacted by Card Services regarding the charges. They have closed the card, reissued another one, and then refunded the charges. The second charges that we had were for FedEx, and those were on the Police Department credit cards. We were not aware of those charges until the time that we received the credit card statement. Since then, the PD Admin have made contact with FedEx, and they are going to be refunding the funds to us. We also have reported that card is compromised. It has been shut down, and we reported the transactions to the Card Services Fraud Department, and they will be getting those charges refunded to our account on this next card statement. And we have subsequently already received the replacement card for the Police Department. I have not confirmed with IT whether or not he has received his.
Okay. And in terms of, I mean, concerning to have this happen twice, I guess, in a 15-day period.
Correct. It's the first time that it's ever happened on our cards.
Right. Any ideas about how it happened, or anything like that?
I don't have information regarding how the one with IT card happened. With the Police Department, there were some packages that were evidently shipped from Wisconsin to California, and they did, whoever utilized the card had the name of an employee with the Police Department, but they were pretty, they were able to see that, obviously, just by route of Wisconsin to California, no stops in Wyoming, that it wasn't anything that we had ordered. So there were not any concerns at all out of FedEx from replacing it, and they actually did say that this is the second, the second one in Riverton that they had seen with regards to this.
Okay. And, I mean, it's already been paid out by the card. I mean, as it is in terms of what actions we could take, we basically would be approving this, but would be looking forward to a refund by FedEx, which they said is coming.
That's, that is correct, and we have taken all the appropriate measures to get the money back.
Any other discussion on the bills? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes, and anything from City Administrator?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would like to express my sincere gratitude and appreciation to the Finance Committee for your oversight, for your guidance, your participation in the budget this year, and your constant participation when it comes to looking at the bills. We need those eyes. So, thank you so much. It's been a privilege coming back and serving you, and you're doing a great job. You're an exceptional committee. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We've definitely enjoyed having your guidance in all of this, too, so, thank you very much.
It's a shame two of the members aren't here tonight to hear that, so we'll make sure they get that message.
Okay, well, if there's no other business, then the meeting is adjourned at, what, 6:50 PM?
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to gather tonight as servants of thy city, and we are thankful for the opportunity that we have to serve this great city. We ask you to please be with us tonight, that we'll be able to have thy Spirit to lead and guide us as we make the decisions, as we go forward, and we ask you to please be with us, that we'll be able to have thy minds open and our hearts softened, to be able to know thy will, and we ask for these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Would City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Lance Cody.
Present.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Present.
Councilman John Peterson.
Here.
Mayor John Baker. I am present, would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmembers Mike Bailey and Holly Gibbon from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I declare that we do have a quorum. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. To approve the agenda, any discussion or amendments? Seatinging? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. And the motion passes. Communication from the floor and citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach podium and identify yourselves for the record.
I'm Reverend Lloyd Charles Eckstein. I am the president, and one board member is here, Dave, of Riverton Food Bank, or Riverton Community Food Bank. We, at this present moment, are lacking funds, so what we normally give out during the month, we are going to shut it down. We're sorry to do that to the people. We're going to go to an emergency setup, so if the law enforcement, fire department, stuff like that, there's an emergency, we will back. We will take it out of my social security disability and my wife's to pay for all the food. I thank all the people that have helped us in the past, in any way, shape, or form. I'm glad. This year, we have had a massive problem with water leak. We've had a massive problem of nobody helping. Five weeks ago, we went to the radio station, and we got one volunteer to come help us clean up. Three weeks, three months ago roughly, or a couple of months, three weeks ago, we had Channel 13, nothing. Nobody is stepping up. Our economy in Fremont, especially in Riverton, is hurting. I know it is, because normally, we get people come up and help out with food, you know. None of the stores will help us, because we're not faith-based, and even though I'm Reverend Lloyd, I've been a pastor, but we didn't want to use my religion or my church as a backing. At this present moment, starting in January, we will have a church, because I have been asked to start a church. My lovely wife, that's sick as all get out, she's got pneumonia and bronchitis, and I may be taking her to the hospital tonight. If this track phone goes off, I'm gone. I'm gonna go and pick her up and take her to the hospital. She is going to start a support group for weight reduction. She's lost over 100-some pounds. She's down to, really, from over 300 pounds, almost, she's down to 160-some pounds. She wants to start a support group, because we were trying to be at the support group here at the hospital, and beans, we had the surgery, she had the surgery done in Colorado, they didn't want us there. So my wife is gonna start a support group for everybody. Right now, there's 19 people that are thinking about having weight reduction surgery. Now, if anybody that's here, or on wherever, that is 19, 39% above their BMI, and are on Medicare, they will pay for the whole amount, except $480, what we have to pay. It was $64,000 surgery for her to have weight reduction. So, anyway, I am sorry, I apologize to the people that we've helped every month. I'm very sorry that we can't be able to help them. We have a little bit left, and we're done. Right now, we've got a couple hundred dollars in the Food Bank account from the coins. We picked all the containers up, because of people saying, "Well, beans, you're shutting down. We don't want you." So, anyway, I will take it out of my $1,700, and Dave will help out as a board member, and we will keep an emergency amount for people that need. And I apologize to all the people that we, we have to shut off their food, and number two, or number one, if anybody uses Riverton Food Bank, or Riverton Community Food Bank, ever again, like they did last year, a group in Jackson Hole, Wyoming says, they'll come here and sue them. And that happened last year during Turkey Days, and Safeway did it. Safeway's dying, dying. Everything's dying. Radio Shack is dying. We are losing a lot of people. I wish we had a factory here, but we don't seem to get one. And I thank you for the time, and if there's any questions, go ahead and ask them, from any place.
Thank you, Lloyd.
You're welcome.
We appreciate, we appreciate all you've done in the community.
Okay. Heard that you were sick, and I hope and pray to God, and I'm gonna ask the good Lord to make you better.
Boy, I need all the help I can.
You're gonna get it, young man.
You can hear me croak.
I know. I'm on medicine right now, a lot of it, so I'm just as bad as you are. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Except my medicine doesn't make me stop croaking. I just...
Well, I hope not, because I'd hate to have to bury you, sir.
If you know what I mean, as a pastor.
Thank you.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna, okay. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes, October 3, 2017, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, October 10, 2017, work session meeting. Approval of the minutes, October 17, 2017, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for October 17, 2017. Approval of the Municipal Court Report for the month of September, 2017. Adoption of Ordinance Number 17-025 on second reading. Title 17 revision. An ordinance amending Title 17 zoning revising Chapter 17.32 R2 Residential District, Section 17.32.010A uses of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, recommendation from the Finance Committee. Let me go ahead and bring this up. I'm not used to being the one that has to read this, so...
There you go.
Would be for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $227,823.40 payroll liabilities for September 29, 2017, in the amount of $532,291.37, for a total of $760,114.77.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your Honor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. So, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation for the Extra Mile Day. Whereas Riverton, Wyoming is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community, when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service, and whereas the Riverton, Wyoming is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community, and whereas Riverton, Wyoming is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. Whereas Riverton, Wyoming acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile Americas to create extra mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2017. Now, therefore, I, John L. Baker, Mayor of Riverton, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2017, to be Extra Mile Day, and I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but also to acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, and the world a better place. So, I signed that proclamation, and certainly want to recognize all the people in, in our community who contribute greatly every day, out of their own free will and choice, really, to make Riverton a better place to be. The next thing, we have contract for services reports, quarterly update, so first would be injury prevention resources.
First off, thank you all for having me. Noel Cooper, Executive Director of Injury Prevention Resources. I'd take a moment to introduce my constituent here. That's Gabriel Cooper. He rushed over from a concert over at his school, and so he came, he went from Harry Potter to nearly dressed appropriately for a council meeting.
Nearly.
So we were quite glad about that. Again, Noel Cooper, Director of Injury Prevention Resources. I'll take a moment to update you on some of the things we're doing, and some of the programs we're continuing to do. We still have some involvement with our Battle of the Belts program, which is a seat belt-oriented program that is competition between high schools. We're, we're getting some help from the recent SAD chapter that's coming through the county, and Students Against Destructive Decisions, and so we're gonna kind of help them and transition that program into something more evidence-based, but really great program, all about getting students and teachers and parents to buckle up and wear seat belts in the schools and everywhere they go. We're continuing to do car seat check events. We, we offer driving simulators that we use typically through Drivers Ed, when we can get there into some of the other areas in the county. We still utilize rollover simulators to show the importance of wearing seat belts and buckling up. We continue with a multitude of programs. Life of You Ready program is a great one that we have a lot of great partners involved with, that kind of does some education and some, some, you know, education, I guess it would be, on high-risk decisions for sixth graders. And so, clear through that, we continue to do our Victims Impact Panel. Anybody with a DUI can be sentenced through the court to come and listen to a speaker, or watch videos relevant to the, some of the horrific things that drunk driving causes. We continue to offer the DUI Probation Program. Glad to say we have, I think, around 82 people, was the last time I looked, which is really good. As I provided you guys, you can see there's a really great trend of DUIs going down in the county, and everywhere we look. You know, almost cut in half in the last five years, and the really great thing about that, too, is that the amount of people that are dying on our roads is also going down. And so, the drinking and driving part is doing great, and there's a lot of great partners and people that help, including law enforcement. They're obviously one of the biggest keys to stopping drinking and driving. And we continue to do that, offer the DUI probation. Happy to see numbers drop. It's a really good thing when, you know, you're working for a cause, and you can see a big change that continues to happen, and it's leading to less lives lost here in our county, here in our city. Really great thing. So, before I dive too far in here, too, just that reminder for the people who don't know, our main goal is saving lives on roads, and that's exactly what our nonprofit's all about, and so, if you haven't picked that up with what I've already said, so. Just, one of the things I'm really excited about is the, we have a new program coming out, and we've, we've had some shifts in programs, some shift in funding. You know, most of our funding comes from the state of Wyoming, and so, there's, there's all kinds of, it's a moving target at times, I guess would be the best way to say it. And so, being able to corral and get those exact things that we want to help our community, and get it on paper in lengthy, lengthy form, is always a challenge, but we continue to be here. We're in Riverton. We're inland or by appointment, and we continue to check car seats, and we do have some programs such as our safety rodeos that, you know, we're gonna have to look at trying to transition into parent groups and some stuff like that. And the rest of the time, again, is kind of a refocus. So, the, the Road Warriors program that's coming out is a really great opportunity to kind of spread our mission and the importance of wearing seat belts, and not driving drunk, and not texting and driving, and be able to spread it through social media, through public awareness, and the really big goal of the program is some, you know, online, you know, competitions for sharing our content through Facebook and all the other fun social media sites, and just a really good way to spread the word. We're also focusing on having some larger-scale events here in Riverton, and, and they'll really focus around the law enforcement overtime events. And, you know, the best thing we can do, according to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, is to highlight the officers' work, you know, to make sure that there, everybody knows there's times in our community where that's not your time to be drinking and driving. There's never a good time, but now is definitely not the time. We want to educate everybody when law enforcement's out and, and trying to save lives, and we want to make sure they understand it, and we want to make sure they avoid going through a DUI, because we know everything about them. They're expensive, they're, they lose, they, they cost lives, and they do all kinds of damage. And so, that's one of the biggest things that these events will focus on, supporting the law enforcement that's out there working, and being able to educate the public, and get them an idea of how do you, how do you survive the Wild West? How do you stay alive on Wyoming roads? We're not quite on the same old dirt trails that we were once on, so things have changed, and we know that if you put the phones away, you don't drive drunk, you don't drive impaired, and you put a seatbelt on, it's gonna cost our community a whole lot less, and it's gonna save people's lives. And so, that's our biggest focus. I also included some stats just for you guys to get an understanding throughout the county. We look at a lot of county behaviors, and I know I'm speaking to the city of Riverton, but I think it's not far-fetched to say that, you know, usually the, the problems that exist in the county come to flow into Riverton, and so, it's, whatever behaviors are happening out in the county, most of those people are driving with those behaviors through our town as well. And we're just excited to keep going, kind of revamp some stuff, and, and maybe offer up a different way to show people how important our mission is. And so, we're also available to be used, you know, through the city of Riverton for services. We have some pretty interesting stuff that can accomplish house arrest, and, you know, we're open and willing to have open conversations about using that stuff, however, and if it can save money and keep people productive in society, then we're in. You know, we're in to help, and never hesitate to contact us if there's something that you guys think that we can do for you. Okay, that's enough talking. Geez, any questions?
Thank you. Doesn't look like we've got any questions, Noel. Thank you for your reference.
Good job, Noel.
Thank you. Volunteers of America?
Sorry. Good evening. Thank you for having us. Shelly Ann Bonner, the Program Director for Volunteers of America Center of Hope, and I have brought Barb Beebe with me. She is the Assistant Program Director for the center as well. as well, so please bear with us. I'll start with the first quarter report, kind of give you some of our successes. You know, a lot of you was at our open house, so you kind of seen what was going on with the first quarter. You'll see that it was a very, very busy quarter for us. And it was a quarter that we are very, very proud of. So, we're hoping that after this first quarter that, you know, we're going to kind of taper down a little bit and really start focusing in on patient care and moving forward with that expansion project that we did. As you can see, I hope you guys all were able to get a copy of this in front of you. We hosted the open house dedication where we, again, we added 2,500 square feet off the back of the facility, which many of you was at, so thank you all for coming to that. It was really nice to see about 100 people in attendance. Would have liked to even seen more, so, but I'm happy for the 100 that we got. The old portion of the facility received a much, much-needed facelift. We now have a state-of-the-art workout facility equipped with commercial-grade equipment. If you have not been in to see it, I highly recommend that you come in and look at it. I'm really proud of it. Barb's really proud of it, and we love to show it off. So, come in and take a look at it. We have new laminate flooring, all in the back. That was in the existing portion of the building, so it's just, it's beautiful. New tile flooring has been laid in the patient showering areas. Again, much needed. We have added a quiet room for the patients to work on employment and housing needs if they need to do something online. Much needed. Transitional patients have access to intensive outpatient services through the addition of the Pingora Behavioral Health Services. This is something else that was really much needed, and we're very, very happy to have. Rotamill was laid in the back staff parking lot. And I really want to thank the city of Riverton for that donation. And I really, really appreciate that. We appreciate that. We're not walking through a mud pit back there. So that was really nice. Thank you for doing that. The Center of Hope participated in the peace march on July 18th, and we are now a new member of the Lander Chamber of Commerce and received the new member plaque in September. So that was a lot of fun to go over there and do that. As you all know, we have social detox beds, close observation bed, and transitional beds. I won't go through all of that again. We continue to work closely with the local judicial system and facilitate treatment for services to those who qualify. So far in the quarter, the first quarter, we had eight referrals from the judicial system, four of those gone to treatment. One formal judicial referral has not only completed treatment, but came back to the center for additional transitional services. In addition to the judicial information listed, the Center of Hope has had one client with a bed date and two clients who are attending IOP. We have three clients who were in the process of applying for treatment. And I'm really happy to say that I know that we're in the second quarter, but I'm going to go ahead and tell you that all three of those people left yesterday. So that's amazing. We had 410 intakes the first quarter. 128 were unique, meaning that we just seen them this quarter. First-time admissions, 49. Close observation days, 254. 56 social detox days, and 62 transitional days. We, so far in the first quarter, we had five people go to residential treatment, but as I just leaked, so far it's been eight. Outpatient treatment, we had three. That's even more, but I'm not quite sure what that number is. It's a little bit more than that. Referrals to community programs was 38. And that's for programs much like Noel's program or, you know, programs like that. They're going to help us with helping these clients be successful in what they're doing. So, with that being said, I'm wondering if any of you have any questions about what I've just told you?
No?
No.
Doesn't look like it, thank you.
Okay, good. Well, let's get into the really good stuff, then.
Good stuff, okay?
Yeah.
Well, I thought that was pretty good stuff.
Well, that's good stuff, too, but this is really the upcoming really good stuff.
Okay.
Go ahead, Barb.
So, October 26th is our annual fundraiser of Filling an Empty Bowl. This year, we're doing a different theme than we normally do, and it's called superheroes. And, you know, soup, because it's soup, so we're really excited about that. And every year, this is how we help to bridge the gap in our community for those that are not sure that they want to go to treatment. This money that we raise stays in Fremont County, and this helps to get those people there. We have a lot of people that have excuses, as you well know, of why they don't want to go or can't go to treatment. And it can be something as simple as, "I don't have any clothes. I don't have any hygiene products. I can't get my medication." That is what this is for, is so that way they don't have those, so we can help to facilitate what they need to be successful. And so, that's what this money is for, and to help people get into housing, you know, once they've completed treatment. That's why we do this, is for, to better our community, to better the people that deserve it. And they're all deserving. And so, we would love to have you all there. We would love to have soup. We would love to have sponsorships. We just, you know, we want to save lives, and that's what this helps to do.
This is our proactive approach to trying to bring the community in to help us continue to save lives, because we have been saving lives. I'm very happy to say we have been saving lives, and I'm very proud of that. Just as proud of the facility, I'm very, very proud to say that we have been saving many, many lives.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
You bet. And so, we'll, you've had an opportunity to be on TV tonight. Lots of people, I'm sure, have seen the pitch, okay? And I'll put my two cents in that having attended the Empty Bowl every year, enjoyed myself, and it's an opportunity to get some good soup. My wife now has a collection of bowls, hand-painted bowls, as a result of attendance. And so, I think we're solid. You'll see us there.
I count on it.
All right.
I count on it.
And I encourage anybody else that hasn't been to Empty Bowl to come and check it out. Are you going to have a band this time?
We're working on that. We're solidifying a band right now.
Solidifying the band?
Yes. We're in talks right now.
Okay, you're in talks?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. And so, that's, we had a lot of different kinds of soup to try, and I think everybody was well-fed when they came. And so, it's a good evening, and the best thing about it is that it's pretty inexpensive to take your family to it.
A family of four can get in for 25 bucks.
And you're doing Halloween costume judging?
We will not be having, since we're having so many games for the children.
Oh, games?
Yeah. There's going to be a lot of children's games.
Okay.
But they are more than welcome. All the kids are more than welcome to come in with their costumes on. In fact, there may be prizes for kids who come in.
Rest is their favorite super.
You betcha.
Super.
You betcha.
You can wear yours, Mayor.
What?
You can wear yours, too.
My costume, too?
Yes, yours, too.
Okay.
If you do.
All right. Good enough. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
You bet. And Fremont County Youth Services report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Melinda Cox, the Director of Juvenile Justice Services of Fremont County. I actually have some paperwork for you. I failed to get it sent, if you don't mind if I hand it out.
Sure. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I appreciate the opportunity that Council gives all of us that are in the service industry, if you will, an opportunity to come and talk about what we're doing. Juvenile justice in Fremont County is a real issue, and it's not going away. I'm going to first talk a little bit about what you see in front of you and the data that's collected. This data is collected every month for, it's part of a reporting process for our Community Juvenile Service Board. The Community Juvenile Service Board provides money from the state of Wyoming to our agency to provide services. And so, each month, we have to let them know what's happening. So if you look, and we'll just talk about highlights here, in July of 2017, we had a total of 18 citations issued to juveniles in Fremont County. Now, that's pretty low considering the next two months, and we'll look at that quickly. And as you can see, those citations are kind of even across the board with drugs being the most issued citation during that month. The next one is the agencies in which issue those citations. And it's, there's really no contest here. Riverton far surpasses every other agency in Fremont County. They issued 10 of those, 18. And ironically, the Highway Patrol this month had five. That's pretty rare that we have citations from the Highway Patrol. And then, the disposition is what's happening and how that case is disposed of. Now, Fremont County Youth Services has always provide diversion programs, pre-court diversion. They are on a term of, a condition of probation. Once they successfully complete those terms, it's dismissed. We inputted a delayed sentencing bond about five years ago, six years ago, and that essentially is also a diversion, where they have an opportunity to appear before a judge. The plea is held on to, if they complete the terms of their bond, then that is also dismissed. So it's just another layer of diversion, giving the juvenile an opportunity to correct the mistake. So you can see how those 18 citations were disseminated throughout the court process. In August, we had 26 total citations. Again, and I don't need to read these, this is easy to read, bar graph, those sorts of things, but again, you'll see that the Riverton Police Department issued 20 of the 26. They are busy. Again, during these months, also, I'll note that we provide moral recognition therapy, shoplifting courses, anger control, and we also operate our day reporting center. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So for August, that looked pretty good, and we, you know, we contribute a lot of that to school starting back into session. Again, you know, alcohol and drugs are our main issue, and we do try to get it corrected before they reach adulthood. And then we'll talk about September. So we are now at 35 citations issued in September, and of those, 27 were issued by the Riverton Police Department. If you also notice in August and September, in the disposition cases, there's been a lot of cases that have been disposed of through the circuit court, primarily here in Riverton. And the reason for that is we have a lot of multiple offenders who oftentimes are not coming to court, or we've actually had several DUI arrests recently. And the county attorney, with our support, is taking the line that we need to treat those seriously and that if they're going to drink and drive, there's going to be a serious consequence, and that consequence would be filing it in through the circuit court. So through these, through these last three months, we, as a result of some budget cuts, lost a probation position. We anticipate not being, not having to lose any more positions. We've got enough in our funding and the support from your municipality as well as Lander's municipality that we can continue to provide services that we do. We will continue the day reporting center. The day reporting center is housed here in Riverton, and it's for juveniles who have been either expelled, long-term suspended, court-involved in some fashion. And they come to the day reporting center five days a week. We've appreciated the accessibility to the RPD and the law enforcement needs that we have. If you can imagine, a day reporting center is kids that haven't been successful in other schools. And not only are they not successful, they tend to blow out pretty significantly. And the support that we have from RPD is very valuable to us. We had an incident yesterday, and Cody Myers responded and was, you know, we couldn't do it without those guys. So we do appreciate that. The other change, or the other thing that we provide is we do a training for all officers, and we just conducted that last, this month. It's gone by fast, September. And that was a really good opportunity to get with the officers and discuss some issues that they have with juveniles and how, you know, when you arrest a juvenile, there's a lot of layers to it. And so, these guys do a good job of really streamlining the process, and it's almost like they don't need training anymore. But it was valuable to them, and I appreciated the opportunity to meet all of the new officers. There's been several new ones. The other thing that's changed for them is for juvenile justice is we used to house kids in Rock Springs. We would transport them. If an RPD officer arrested a juvenile here, they would transport them to Lander, and Lander, the sheriff's department would transport to Rock Springs. At the 31st of September, that contract ended, and we now are transporting kids to Casper. Nothing else has changed. It's actually a win-win for everybody, really. The Casper Juvenile Detention Center is a JDC, and they, so they do a lot of juvenile programming, and it's not just a traditional jail or an adult jail. So we're happy with that. We started doing that with our first inmate this weekend, and it all went very well. And so, right now, just to finish up, in the Riverton office, we still have two probation officers. We have one direct services provider, and then myself. I've been housed out of the Riverton office, which is a new change for youth services. The director's always been housed in Lander, and I have moved my office over here, because as you can see, the majority of the work is here.
Could you tell me why Riverton has the highest on youth? The population in Riverton certainly isn't three or four times higher than Lander. What are we attributed to?
Sure. Councilman Larson, that's a great question, and I think that what I can tell you is that for the course of my time in Fremont County and working with juveniles as well as in the adult population, 75% of the crime, not necessarily the crime, but the clients come from Riverton, and 25% generally from Lander. There's a couple, there's a couple of reasons probably for that as far as population, officer patrolling, those kinds of things. And I think that, you know, across the board, RPD is outperforming in a lot of ways because they've really gotten on board with how we do our new juvenile justice procedure. And that procedure is not easy. Sometimes these guys have to stay with a juvenile for six hours, seven hours, and, but they've really committed to it. And so, that could be part of it. The other thing that I will note to you, that these are citations, not individuals. And so, you could have, and we do have several in Riverton specifically, one juvenile may generate six citations. And so, that would then increase that contact as well.
Jim?
I was curious about this shoplifting class. Is that something you're just doing with juveniles right now?
Yes, it is something that we just do with juveniles. We haven't...
Full day? Been doing it once a month?
Yes. It costs $10 for the book.
You have someone who's teaching it and everything?
Yeah, we actually have two, we have two probation officers who are trained in the curriculum and conduct the class.
The only shoplifting class that I know of in the county. I mean, am I wrong? That's...
I'm not aware of another one.
Yeah. Interesting.
Might be something we're doing.
What's that?
For adults.
Well, it's just, we have shoplifters in the city of Riverton. As a prosecutor, I'm always interested in ways to be able to address it, so.
And it is, it is a good program. It's developed by the same people that have developed moral recognition therapy, which is an evidence-based program that we've conducted here in Fremont County for about 15 years. So it is a good, it's a good curriculum.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, you bet. Thanks for coming this evening. We appreciate, we appreciate the work that you do, and...
You have someone who's teaching it and everything?
Yeah, we actually have two, we have two probation officers who are trained in the curriculum and conduct the class.
The only shoplifting class that I know of in the county. I mean, am I wrong? That's-
I'm not aware of another one.
Yeah. Interesting.
Might be something we're doing.
What's that?
For adults.
Well, it's just, we have shoplifters in the city of Riverton, and as a prosecutor, I'm always interested in ways to be able to address it, so.
And it is, it is a good program. It's developed by the same people that have developed moral recognition therapy, which is an evidence-based program that we've conducted here in Fremont County for about 15 years. So it is a good, it's a good curriculum.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, you bet. Thanks for coming this evening. We appreciate, we appreciate the work that you do, and feel good about our, our contribution. It's been used well. Thank you. Eagles Hope Transition Update, Matt White.
Thank you for having me on your agenda tonight. My name is Matt White, and I am the Chair of the Eagles Hope Transition Board. For those of you who aren't familiar with Eagles Hope Transition, it is a Wyoming nonprofit based in Riverton, Wyoming. It provides an opportunity for Fremont County residents to create and build new lives in order to transition back into their families in the community. They acquire knowledge, skills, and guidance to access and utilize required services to become a healthy, productive member of Fremont County. Eagles Hope Transitions provides a safe and sober living environment that allows all patrons to maintain dignity and respect in long-term personal and financial sustainability. We are located on 8th and Main. I don't know, are you guys familiar with the Eagles Hope Transitions? A year ago, we didn't exist in the context that we do now. We were just forming a board, we hadn't even filed for our nonprofit status, the building was owned privately. We were told, oh, in the month of August, that it was, power would be shut off, so we paid it. Then he told us the water would be shut off, and we paid it, and then he kicked us out of the building, and it died. We, through donors, purchased the building and became a nonprofit, a true nonprofit. And I'd like to thank the city of Riverton, because without their generous support, we would not be here today. One of the difficulties you have in your town is, I was a homeless person for three years in California. It was pretty easy to make it through the winter. It's not here. I don't know how homeless people make it through the winter. We provide a safe and sober environment. We do not, we are not a handout, we are a hand-up. We charge for our rooms from $275 to $450 a month. We are full. But when we started, the building was in dire need of being cleaned, the power turned on, and the water turned on. At that time, the owner had not paid utilities or the water. Chief Broadhead was the chair at that time, and he came before you and obtained a $6,000 credit. And that is why I'm before you today. That credit has run out, and we would not have been able to get where we are today. This is our new executive director, Michelle Wiedemeyer. We just hired her beginning in October. So like I said, we've gone through two directors. We are just being able to even offer a director a salary. We got a grant, a CSBG grant, and we're applying for other grants, but I can't stress how much your credit helped get us to where we are today. As the owners of the building, now we fix it. We are trying to winterize. This grant cannot be used for any renovations or anything like that, it's a very structured grant. And so I am asking you today to reinstate that credit for another year. And one of the problems that we had when we cleaned up was the city had to pay for some garbage dumping, and we understand that comes out of the budget. It's almost $2,000. We will not incur that expense again, because we've already since went in the rooms, debugged them, got rid of all the old furniture, cleaned the carpets, and at this present time, this facility is full. We work, and we've had people transition from your homeless shelter, from Set Free Church, from the Center of Hope, and we are prepared, as we did last winter, when there's an overflow of getting people out of the 20-degree below zero weather, and getting them in a place for, for the night in an emergency. And so we, we would love to start a new food bank, but everything takes money. And, and if it wasn't for donations in the city, I don't know if we'd even be open now. But we are healthy, we are in the black, but just barely. And this is Michelle again, we just hired her. Do you have any questions? Time is of the essence, as winter is coming and approaching. We are trying to, we have AmeriCorps coming in as volunteer workers to help winterize, but again, they don't bring their own materials. We had another group come in from the Methodist Church that, trying to get two rooms and renovate them, they brought their own materials. So we applied for grants, we're a mission from the Yellowstone Conference of the Methodist Church, and we are actively seeking donations and grants. But as we've only been in existence a year, we are, we are just still struggling and getting ready for winter. And they, they are not good winters here.
Thank you, Matt. So Courtney, last year, we, the credit was against the water sewer and garbage sanitation?
Yes, Your Honor, on two different accounts.
Okay. And you had two different accounts?
Yes.
And that's one account now, or do you-
It's exhausted right now.
What is exhausted?
The credit, or-
Right.
Yeah. So, so what are we looking at, a year for that?
I think, Mia, jump in if you have.
Your Honor, at the time that we gave the credit for $6,000 last year, it was for two buildings. There's two separate water meters up at that location, and we calculated, based on a usage, what we thought that their annual one-year usage would be, and it was right, right on at about $6,000. So after their year has expired, it has, they have fully expended the funds. That did include a major cleanup, which included roll-off containers that were utilized, and then the city has to pay for the sanitation that goes over the scale for the waste, and so that was included in the $6,000.
Thank you.
We will not incur that expense this year.
Okay.
So Your Honor, on one of those accounts, a monthly bill for sanitation was around $450 to $600 a month for about four months, I believe. So that should be down considerably.
That was taking, taking all those roll-offs away?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any heartburn continuing to do that? Cover their water sewer and, it turns out to be not as much of an expense to us, it's a lack of income, right? Shows up differently?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
It doesn't show up. We give it away. We, just as a matter of information, we do have auditors that look and see what services were given and given away.
Right, right.
I would think that $3,500 to $4,000 would carry them for a year on both accounts through, well, it would be less, I guess. Maybe they could address the council again in March, but I'm thinking about $3,000 to probably carry them until the end of June.
Okay. And, and, and we do something similar with the Good Samaritan Center, isn't that correct?
Yes, we pay about $2,700, correct me, Mia, if I'm wrong, $2,700 in services, and the rest we pay out $1,750.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I would be willing to do some analysis on the account with their usage last year, less the amount of the roll-off charges, to be able to determine what an average would be per month on the bill.
One deciding factor we have is, depending on how many people we have-
Sure.
-it's out, we didn't, slower, and now it's gearing up to where we're, we're probably going to be full now all the time. We're actually having to turn people away. That helps with your-
Okay.
Your Honor.
Lance?
I'm curious if, if maybe you can give us any insight as to the board's plans for picking those charges up at some point? Like if, if the city was not able to, to assist you, what would the board be planning to cover those charges in the future? Or is there a plan for that?
There is. We've, we started and going through directors, we didn't have anybody that was writing grants for us or pursuing any fundraising for us, and now we feel that we have that in place. But it takes time to get grants, write grants, and then when they come in, we're in the process of applying for a grant from Wells Fargo that I know Center of Hope has got. So the only other option we have is to raise our rents for the, for the people that stay there. We can put someone up for a month, what they're staying for in hotels, for a week. And the whole point is to get them to transition back into the community. And so we try to keep it as, we're not trying to make money or build up a reserve and, and trying to get people to go through, and we have. And again, we're dealing with people that are coming out of addiction, they're coming out of Lander Hospital, people that are coming out of Set Free. We provide IDs for them, we have, right, well, A-classes budgeting, and we're just trying to put a lot of different things in place, and a lot of them take a little bit of money. So it's, we would some way find a way to pay for it, but with the city's help, we can put money into other things. We went through and fixed all the plumbing with volunteers and tried to really keep an eye on any leaks, because we, we really appreciate what the city did and try not to take advantage of it.
In terms of financial health and everything of the city, is this plausible to be able to handle this? I mean, we can fit it into the budget somewhere, or tell me a little bit about that?
Well, Mia, you're going to have to help me again. I believe sanitation is very healthy.
Sanitation is healthy.
And water is healthy?
Yes.
What about?
Waste water?
Waste water.
Is healthy.
So that simply is an adjustment on the, on the utility bill that we offer a credit. And the only reason I mentioned auditors is that, that is the picture of the audit report, is how much leakage are we, are we having in our pipes underground? And so they look at the usage that we have versus what is billed out. And those are things that when they come in next week on the 23rd, they dig quite a bit in our utility account. So I'm not saying that the city is, does a bad job with that. We don't give our services away very often, so I think we could do that, is what I'm getting around to.
Your Honor, would, I guess then, Mia, if, would it be appropriate to wait until the first meeting in November? Because that's our next meeting, to be able to give a report to determine our ability to support, rather than just throw a figure out that may not be very accurate, that would we be able to, I don't know where they're at with their credit at this point, to be able to say it's okay to wait till November, or do we need to do something tonight?
Your Honor, I think if, if you, if this is something that the council is considering approving, we can work with them with regards to their existing utility bill and their upcoming bill, until you have a more definite dollar amount that you would be willing to
The only reason I'd say it sooner than possible is, is we're trying to winterize, and we're wondering whether we need to put money aside to pay for water and sewer, or can we go ahead and concentrate on, we have a group coming in November 7th, AmeriCorps, a lot of volunteers, and we really don't, right now, we got about donations, you know, we go to the churches, a lot of churches, and so it's, would tremendously tell us which direction we can go. We can't spend that money if we're going to have to pay for water and sewer. And again, it, I think when we broke it down, those dumpsters ran about $2,000, the sewer about $2, and the water about $2. So that $2,000 on those dumpsters will not be there. We may have some trash out there, but it will not get to that expense. So that $4,000 is, is a good figure, I would think, but again, you know, you do your analysis and stuff, but that's the figures we got for the previous year.
And then we need to figure what we are to June 30th? Is that, but we try to do this on a fiscal year basis, and-
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. And so I, I, I think the easy way to do it is to, is to say we'd go $3,000, get a credit against the utility bill, and, and, and then if we have to fiddle with it in June, we can. And then, and then we can put, we could, we could put, have them come in and, and be part of the contract for services discussion during budget time?
Yes.
Okay. So that's like April?
Does that require a motion?
That would. I'd like a motion to do that.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we set aside a $3,000, $4,000 credit for-
For?
Eagles-
Hope.
Eagles Hope Transition for the paying of their utility and water.
Thank you.
Does that cover it?
Second. Clarify, you said three or four?
$4,000.
Okay.
That was the number that we decided on, right?
$4,000 for the water, sewer, and sanitation bills.
Yep. What Mia said.
What Mia said.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Second.
Somebody already did.
Council.
Kyle did.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Mayor votes aye. Thank you for what you do.
And in appreciation, we do have a breakfast on the 27th. You're all invited, if you'd like to come down and see the facility at 8:00 in the morning, the residents. We provide them one meal a day, and it really truly is an asset to your city to have this up and running and be a true nonprofit, where you don't have an owner taking it, all that money, and putting it away.
So you might, you might tell us who else on the board?
Michelle, myself, Kelly Reese, Lori Sanders, Becky Lancaster, Jack Schmidt, Jesse-
Lee?
Reese.
Lee.
Lee, Barbara Gose, and Kayla-
Brown.
Brown, and the dispatcher over here.
Thank you.
Eric for a little while.
Okay. And thank, thank you for all those-
Yes, we're looking for new board members all the time, that anybody be interested, and we'd love to have you come on our board.
Good.
That was the 27th, at 8:00 for that breakfast?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Matt. Fiscal Health Report, Mia Harris, Finance.
It's just getting fun, why are they leaving?
Was it something you said?
No.
Thank you. Hey, thank you for having me here tonight to discuss the Fiscal Health Report for the first quarter. I wanted to start off, first of all, by thanking Courtney for the time that she has spent with us. I think this might perhaps be very close to our last meeting together, and I want to thank you for all of the education and the guidance and the assistance that you have provided me. I'm in my new position as the Finance Director. I've learned a tremendous, a lot, and I will miss you dearly, so. I am happy to give this first quarter summary report. It's, when I took on the position, I, I jumped in in the middle of the fiscal year, and so this is my first first-quarter financial summary report, and it's not near the nail-biter that the final annual year-end report is, because I'm getting an opportunity to look at our revenue and expenditure projections and see where we are, and we're not doing too bad. So I apologize if this is a little bit hard to read. I provided everybody with copies of the presentation ahead of time, and for the benefit of the viewers and the audience, we will post this information out on our website tomorrow, so if it's not clear on your screen at home, you will have a better version of it in the morning. So what this is a presentation, a representation of is our entire budget, and it's broken down by fund. So our general fund, and then all of our enterprise funds. This includes all of our capital projects that are in effect right now, and any reimbursements that we would have received through our grants, and all governmental agencies, different things like that. So it's a complete picture of where we are setting, based on our revenue and expenditure projections for the budget season. We did, the council did approve a slightly, a slightly larger than $26 million budget for the year. for the year. And as far as you can see on these slides here, our revenues that we have brought in for the first quarter of the year total $1,788,381. And the expenses that we have spent so far this first quarter is $1,755,561. So, our revenues have outpaced our expenditures by $32,000 in the general fund. It should be noted, though, that the general fund does support airport operations, and I'll get into that a little bit deeper with, within this presentation, but so far, we're looking at $32,000 to the good. The next slide that I have, does anybody have any questions, first of all, about the general fund before I move on? No? Okay. Okay, so the next slide is a representation of the water fund. For the water fund, we have brought in $968,537,000 in revenue. The water fund, the revenues that we've received in the water fund at this point are basically enterprise operating revenue is the largest portion of that. That is money that we receive from all of our, our utility bills, and you'll see this reflected also in the sewer and the sanitation billing. So, based on the rate increase that we saw in April, this is the amount of money that we have received in the water fund so far in the first quarter. As far as our expenses go, we have spent $649,220 for expenses, and this money supports our water treatment plant, our folks out in collection and distribution and administration, and then also if there's any capital projects, you would see funds reflecting there as well. So, there's a difference of $319,000, $317,000 that our revenues have outpaced our expenditures at this point in the fiscal year. The next screen is a representation of our wastewater fund, and again, our enterprise operating revenue that we've brought in, including some miscellaneous revenues, total And our expenses, which support our wastewater treatment plant, wastewater collection and administration, totals $488,337,61. So, there is a difference of revenue over expenditures, $44,814 in the wastewater fund. And the next slide represents the sanitation fund. Our operating revenue was $614,421, and our expenses, which support all of our sanitation operations, our administration, our tub grinder operations, those are the folks that handle our yard waste material, and then also our curbside recycling program. Expenses total $599,459. And the total difference then, $14,961 to the good. So, when we were talking with the Eagles Hope Transition Centers, and, and the question was raised is, are our enterprise funds healthy enough that we could support helping them with their $4,000? They are.
So, excuse me, there, the last three graphs, on the revenue side, we've, it's almost all green, and then there's this little tiny sliver of red.
The little tiny sliver of red is just the miscellaneous revenue. For the sanitation fund, miscellaneous revenue, let me look and see what comes into that fund, if I could really quickly.
I thought that was in my class.
It's actually, the miscellaneous revenue is the sale of property is what's, what that's comprised of. We had an excess of sanitation containers, the giant three yard and yard and a half containers. We had a surplus of old containers that we had in our inventory, and we have offered those up for sale to the public, and so, this, these are funds that we've received from the sale of those.
Thank you.
The final slide that I have then is the airport fund. Actually, it's not the final slide, but it's the next slide, is the airport fund. Our airport revenues, we've received $146,000, and our expenses are at $283,000. So, this slide does show that our revenues are not keeping up with the expenses of the airport. It's important to remember that the airport is actually an enterprise fund. While we count it, count the funding separate from the airport, it, it is subsidized by the general fund. So, if you go back, ooh, I don't know what I touched there. If we go back to the original general fund slide, we had a difference of $32,000 in revenues. That was not including the shortfall for the airport. So, because the airport supports, or the general fund supports airport operations, the budget does reflect a net closing of the general fund of negative $104,343. See if I can rotate this thing around. All right, well, I'm gonna move forward to the next slide. The next slide is the airline minimum revenue guarantee. These are the funds that we are using to keep our air service going. The revenues that we have brought in so far this year are $331,769, and the expenses for the airline minimum revenue guarantee are $354,297. So, there is a difference of $22,000 where our revenues have not outpaced the expenses, but we do have some outstanding grant reimbursements that we are still receiving for this funding, and also will want to keep in mind that the city of Lander and the Fremont, and Fremont County also have committed funds for the airline minimum revenue guarantee. As well as the city of Riverton, we budgeted $200,000 into our budget and assigned those funds when we did the budget for the airline revenue guarantee. I did transfer the $200,000 out of the assigned funds and into the budget so that you can, so that we can continue to provide that service. Are there any questions?
So, the airport fund, did you say the difference then? What, what was the, I didn't quite catch, what was the change there?
So, the net difference, Councilman Hancock, is, for the general fund, the net difference in the general fund would, it would be negative $104,343.06. Do you see where I'm coming up with that number?
It's the difference between...
The revenues were...
And the positive.
The expenses for the airport were greater than the revenues, and the difference was $137,000. The general fund, our revenues were greater by $32,000, so the difference between the two is where that number comes from.
Thank you.
Okay. I also wanted to mention that we are still maintaining a health reserve balance. We are required by fiscal policy to carry 18.5% of annual operating revenue in our reserves, and we're, we're very much maintaining that.
And so, so with regards to the airport, we have a, we have a line item budgeted in our general fund, isn't that correct?
We do have an airport subsidy line item budgeted in our general fund.
Okay. And so, this is for the first quarter of the fiscal year?
It is.
And, so maybe the expenses, this is representative of what we'll, we'll spend the rest of the quarters, so?
It's a possibility. We've also got some additional revenues that we'll be receiving. I know we still have to send out airport lease billings, and so that will be reflective. It's not a large amount, so I think we're just gonna have to continue to watch it. We may need to make some budgetary adjustments later on in the year, but right now, it's just too soon to tell.
Too soon to tell. Thank you.
Any have any other questions? I do also want to mention that we are monitoring our funds. We watch them on a regular basis. Every month, I meet with, with our city administrator, and we review the revenues and the expenditures. We do comparisons and analysis from where we were in the prior year. We also send out monthly budget reports to supervisors, and we meet with leadership team members also on a regular basis to determine where they're at in their budget and if we need, need to make any budget adjustments.
Thank you. That's, that's the report that interests me, is the one that has the column over there that says we've spent 25% to date. So, in the first quarter, you should be spending about 25% of your budget by that point. By the time we get to the end of the year, we are looking for around 100%.
Correct.
And hopefully, it's a little less than that, and that leaves us a little cushion. So, I, I, I think that helps us monitor that, you look at that every month.
We do.
And, and so then you can, and see if something's crazy out of line, and then you can go back and ask why.
And we sit down and talk about it.
Good. Thank you, Mia, for, for your, oh, Kyle?
The figure of $23,000 that you came up with, we had, we had subsidized and we were, we had an increase, and therefore, our subsidy was $23,000. What was that?
Are you talking, are you referring to the airline, to the airport subsidy, or the airline minimum revenue?
Airline.
Guarantee. Okay. So, those are, the revenues that we receive from those are grant, it's grant money, so it's reimbursable to us. So, it would make sense that we would see that the expenditures would be a little bit higher as we're waiting for the reimbursements to come back to us. So, that's why we're seeing a difference of a negative $22,000 in that particular fund.
One more question. This is to Kyle. Do we, do we see an increase in, in boarding?
Your honor, it depends week to week, but we are seeing an increase as far as how much we're selling tickets. We are going into the slow season, but our load factors for each flight are increasing from where they were last year, and at least for the Riverton side, we're taking up more of the, the aircraft and the Sheridan side, so our, our market is rebuilding.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mia.
You're welcome, and I'd like to thank you all for participating in our budget process this year. It's been wonderful having the council folks involved, and, you know, it's just part of what we do to help make sure that we're collectively as a group, keeping track of our, our citizens' funds, and I appreciate your involvement in this also.
That was, that was good for us.
Good.
So, so we hope that we'll be able to do that again next year and, and, and be observers of the process. Okay? It gives us faith that staff is doing a good job with, with the budget. Thank you.
Same time next year.
Adoption of ordinance 17-021, third and final reading, sanitation rates. Would the city clerk please read ordinance 17-021 by title only?
Yes, your honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-021 on third and final reading, and ordinance amending Title VIII, Health and Safety, Chapter 8.12, Garbage Collection and Disposal, to revise sections 8.12.020, fees for sanitation services, 8.12.210B, placement of containers, 8.12.250, deposit of refuse, 8.12.290, monthly payment, 8.12.320, failure to pay of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 17-021 on third and final reading.
Do this with my roll call.
Yeah, but you have to have a motion.
So moved. Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, your honor. Councilman Lance Cody.
Aye.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor John Baker.
Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Adoption of ordinance 17-022, third and final reading, repeal special municipal officer. Would the city clerk please read ordinance 17-022 by title only?
Yes, your honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-022 on third and final reading, and ordinance amending Title VIII, Administration and Personnel, to review Chapter 2.30, Special Municipal Officer of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 17-022 on third and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, your honor. Councilman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Lance Cody.
Aye.
Mayor John Baker.
Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Adoption of ordinance 17-023, third and final reading, property maintenance and nuisance abatement. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 17-023 by title only?
Yes, your honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-023 on third and final reading, and ordinance amending Title VIII, Health and Safety, to establish Chapter 8.24, property maintenance and nuisance abatement of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 17-023 on third and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, your honor. Councilman Lance Cody.
Aye.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor John Baker.
I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 16, consideration of ordinance 17-024, first reading, non-conforming uses. The chair would entertain a motion to take this off the table for consideration.
So moved. Or second. I'll second. Sean goes.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on taking this off the table? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. It's now off the table. I believe we had a, we had a motion last time. Okay, so, we're back to that, and so the chair would, so we need to call for a vote on that motion, and is this the one we are not happy with? We're not happy with this.
[laughing]
Okay. All right. So, the chair would, would call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say aye.
Aye. Or nay, or a second thing.
Nay. I am opposed.
I'm opposed.
To passing this ordinance, which I think was the motion that we had.
Yes.
It was a motion to approve. We're denying the motion to approve.
That's right. We had a motion to approve the ordinance.
Ah.
We're denying that, okay?
That's correct. We have to vote nay.
So, we're gonna vote no.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay, nay, nay.
Nay, nay, nay. And the mayor says nay as well, and so that has been defeated. Item 17, memorandum of understanding, Air Services Revenue Management Committee, Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, honor. Coming before you is a memorandum of understanding. It is a renewal of a MOU that was in place last year. It has to do with our air service program with Denver Air Connection, and as Mia correctly reported, we have received commitments from the city of Lander and Fremont County, and as part of those contributions, we wanted to reinstate this MOU, which basically establishes a committee to review the weekly invoices and basically manage the donations that have been given from each of the communities. As you were able to see in the staff report, the MOU is very similar to the one we had last year. The only changes were minimal in nature. Obviously, they had to do with the dates and the amounts, and then a few other modifications. One, for example, the first MOU stated that the funds that were received from the other entities would be put in, in an interest-bearing account. That's not actually true. It's more of an, an operational account, so we changed that, and each of the other entities, both Fremont County and Lander, considered this MOU on October 10th and have passed it, and we would like to propose the same MOU to you as the city council, which again establishes or reestablishes this revenue guarantee subcommittee, and their duty is to review the weekly invoices submitted by Denver Air Connection and then approve their payment. Councilman Larson did ask a question, and I have a little bit better information I can provide you at this time. When we consider the MO, the MRG, excuse me, the Minimum Revenue Guarantee for Air Service, the way that is established is the air service provider gives us a cost. They say, we're, we're gonna fly in your community, and it's gonna cost this much money. We then have utilized our consultant forecasting to establish how much revenue we think our market can make, and the difference between that total cost and the revenue that we think we can generate is that minimum revenue guarantee. Each month for the year, for the service with Denver Air Connection has an estimated amount of how much we'd be contributing for that minimum revenue guarantee. In the month of July, we had estimated that we would be contributing $129,000 towards the minimum revenue guarantee. We contributed more than that, meaning our performance for the month of July was less than what we were anticipating. We contributed $146,000, so we paid $17,000 more than we were thinking in July. Reason being, July is a high month, and we thought we'd sell more tickets. However, when we look at August, we anticipated that we would be paying $150,000 look at August, we anticipated that we would be paying $150,000 towards the minimum revenue guarantee. We only paid $115,000, meaning we sold more tickets and flew more people in August, which gave us a surplus for that month against our estimate of the minimum revenue guarantee of $34,000. I just calculated quickly the month of September, and the month of September, we were anticipating that we would be spending $173,000 against that minimum revenue guarantee. We actually spent $165,000, so we had $8,000 that we did not expend in the month of September. So outside of July, each month, we're performing very well against the projections of our, of our minimum revenue guarantee. I hope that paints a better picture. We're going into the slower months, like I mentioned. However, the minimum revenue guarantee calculations based off of that monthly performance took that into account. Our sales are doing well, and we're tracking that weekly, so we hope that we will not expend the entire amount of the minimum revenue guarantee, but we'll track that, and time won't tell. So that gives a little bit more detail on the question that was asked, and we again recommend that we execute this memorandum of understanding between Lander and Fremont County.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Air Services Revenue Management Committee memorandum of understanding.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Questions, Lance?
Kyle, you mentioned something. I, I wanted to clarify with you that the committee approves the payment of the difference? Is that, it's not the actual city of Riverton, is the, as the, I can't remember what the term was, the financial?
Fiscal agent.
Yeah, fiscal agent. There you go. The fiscal agent. So the committee is assigned with approving those bills, or are we ultimately assigned with paying those bills?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
As you read in the MOU, the city of Riverton is the fiscal agent. It holds the funds for the monies that we receive from Fremont County and Lander. Because Lander and Fremont County are donating funds, they deserve a say in how they're managed, and so basically, we receive those weekly invoices, and representatives from each of those communities, including the city of Riverton, review them and say, "Yes, these were calculated correctly. The block hours that are reported are accurate. We track the fuel usage each week." And so right now, it's Mrs. Harris, and with the county, it's Mr. Harnsberger, and with Fremont, excuse me, with Lander, I'm forgetting her last name, but it's Shari. They review those every week and say, "Yes, we concur, and we're okay that those funds that we donated to you can be expended on this."
And so the, the issue for us is that, is that we have to pay that every week, but we don't meet every week.
Okay.
Okay, and so we've, we're delegating that approval process to this committee.
Your Honor, I apologize. I know that was a lengthy answer, but if you're asking more if the city of Riverton makes the payment, and it's reviewed by the claims process through the finance committee, yes, they do.
Okay. I did want to clarify that.
Thank you.
I see that, Your Honor.
Tim.
I see that the MOU from last year was for $200,000 each. What was the contribution this year from everyone, because I don't think it actually set the amount here?
Your Honor, that is correct. It is not listed in this current MOU. The request for $200,000, as you remember, was put before each of the governing bodies. The city of Riverton matched that. Lander contributes $100,000 at this point, and Fremont County has dedicated $150,000. When we look at math on our air service, that puts us short. We've done some analysis, and based off of the funds we've received, without receiving the $200,000 from each of the other entities, we can safely fly or keep flights going through the month of April. The only way to make us keep flying through May and June is either we do really well, week over week, and have more ticket sales than what we had anticipated, like I explained on that minimum revenue guarantee calculation, or the FAST committee has to receive an addition of funds from each of the other entities.
And if they don't, we don't fly?
Your Honor, that's correct. We fly till we run out of money.
Go ahead, Sean.
Who is, who are we appointing to this committee? Would that be yourself, or will it be, or is that the next question?
Your Honor, if the council would like to make that, they can. I personally feel that Mia Harris would be a great representative on that. She's been doing it. Gloria Hardman was doing it first. I see those invoices anyway, but I feel that Mia and her position is, is the perfect person for that.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Okay, public hearing and consideration.
Do we need to, does that need to be in a motion for Mia to be on that, or is that just something that?
No.
We just.
Your Honor, I think we can handle that administratively unless Courtney feels differently.
She agrees, okay.
Okay.
Courtney's doing a lot of nodding, and alternatively.
Short timers.
Yeah, the other entities didn't name anybody either.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. Just, they get to name somebody.
Nice.
Okay. Public hearing and consideration of ordinance 17-026, first reading, planned unit development. Could we have the interim community development director's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. This is creating a combined commercial-industrial-residential for planned unit development. It's coming due to the Eastern Shoshone Tribe and the honor farm property that's going to be brought into the city. What this will do with this new chapter is we will be able to review their proposed PUD, and to see that it complies with this new chapter, it will also be in line with any future PUDs that come in to the city of Riverton. Now, the planning commission heard this on the 12th of October. They approved it. There was minor amendments to the draft that we presented to them, and it was mostly small wording and terminology.
Would the city clerk please read ordinance 17-026 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-026 on first reading, and ordinance amending Title 17, zoning to establish Chapter 17.46, PUD Combined Commercial Industrial Residential Planned Unit Development of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
The chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing on 17-026, first reading.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws, and I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Seeing none, Your Honor, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be closed. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 17-026 on first reading.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Your Honor.
Lance.
Dave, could you just kind of put this in English for me? That, that as things are proposed in this large area, if they're proposed in parts and pieces, each one of those parts and pieces will be reviewed as to its fitting either a commercial, an industrial, or a residential. Like, they're not gonna, this isn't a way to propose the whole thing. It's to propose parts of the whole over time.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Dave.
So what is, this does is they present a plan to us that designates the different areas within the PUD, being the commercial, industrial, and residential. So they give us a basic plan, but you have to understand that this is gonna be a 20-year project.
Right.
So as things change and as our community changes, so does this PUD, but the basics are set up for and established that they have to comply with. And then as areas are developed, that area is then planted and brought before the council, and actually is brought before the planning commission first, then is brought before the council. So there's additional times that it gets to be reviewed, but it just gives you an outline of what they're proposing to do.
Until they firm up what they're going to do. Like, it's rough. I guess I'm, I'm still confused as to how firm we see something to start with versus what it actually is proposed and platted for.
Your Honor, what happens is, is like if on this PUD, there will be designated utilities, streets, right-ofways, and those will be as part of the infrastructure. They will be committed to that. Now, so that kind of defines the areas. It doesn't say that they won't have to adjust them slightly, but for the most part, they're gonna stick to that because that's what they have submitted, and that's kind of what has been reviewed. So they'll try and keep these different zones separated so that they're compatible, yet they work well together in the location that they've selected.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so my understanding of this is, correct me if I've got it wrong, but my understanding of this is, is that what we're doing right here is actually creating city code that will allow for this combined PUD as a zoning class.
Your Honor, that is correct.
That is correct. Okay, then at a later date, if this passes, then at a later date, we will actually see the approval of the PUD process, and that comes to us again as a three-reading process to adopt the, the PUD plan for Shoshone Tribe and the, and the honor farm property.
That is correct, Your Honor.
And then after that point, what we see down the trail is that would be similar to what we do on a replat, and so when we plat a piece of ground, the planning commission looks at it, and they pass it, and then it comes to the city council, but we pass it on one reading. So it isn't, that, that part of it is not part of the city code. The general part of it is the city code. Okay, and so our goal here is to get this all wrapped up by the end of December. So we'll take three readings and then three more readings in order to get there. Okay, so. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of, oh, let's see, have we read that? We read it? We're good there? Okay. Proposed ordinance 17-026. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes on first reading. Public hearing and consideration of ordinance 17-027, first reading, rezon petition or habitat for humanity. Interim Community Development Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a area up in the College Hill development area that's presently, it has been zoned PUD, and it's been donated to Habitat for Humanity, and they would like to rezon it to R2. The lots are already set up for single-family dwellings, as it sits right now, and so their proposing is to rezon this to R2 just for that use.
Would the city clerk please read ordinance 17-027 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-027 on first reading, and ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the rezon of blocks 1A, 2A, 3A, 4A, Block 2, replat of blocks 2, 4, and 5, College Hill Development to the city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from residential PUD Planned Unit Development to R2 residential.
The chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open, motion to open public hearing on College View replat.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and I declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Andy Eckard. I'm the Board of Directors President for Habitat for Humanity Wind River Chapter. I am only here really to answer any questions that you all have, so whatever I can do for you.
Any questions? So you're gonna build four houses there?
We are considering at the board level of whether to build four or possibly five because of the, the quit claim on the alley and, I forget the name of the street, to the north. That expands that property or our ability to build on that. We could put in.
Squeeze in five.
Yeah.
Good. Okay. Anybody else want to talk about this? Being no others to speak, the chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The, I, yes, and the declare that the public hearing is now closed. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 17-027 on first reading.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Council Committee reports, Councilmember Roundtable. Mr. Godey, have you got anything for us tonight?
I don't believe I do.
Mr. Hancock?
I'll let, I'll let Sean talk about what I was gonna talk about.
Perfect opportunity.
I even had the chance, Sean, of giving it to you.
Mr. Larson?
I was supposed to go on Monday to the waste management, and I missed it because I was down on Second Street watching Blacktop go on Second Street, and man, that looks great. The usage of 1% money. Couldn't have been placed in a better place. Dave's asphalt was putting it down, and, and they were doing a very good job. The sidewalks, the curbs, that is, Second Street hasn't been in need of repair for a long time, and that sure takes a.
Looks pretty good. I, I drove by there this afternoon. Looks like maybe I, I saw the, next to the last truckload of asphalt arrived, so. Looked pretty good, looked pretty good from sunset. I made the assumption that since everything except one little corner was filled up with fresh new asphalt, that they must have started on the other end. So looks pretty good. Okay. Mr. Peterson?
I have nothing. No, I'm just, myself, Councilman Hancock, and Councilman Bailey, we all attended the Purple Ball this Friday night. It was the first annual Purple Ball for the domestic violence awareness. They, they filled up that room over there in the Holiday Inn. It was nice to see. I didn't receive any final numbers yet. I figured I'd give them a little bit, so hopefully next time we report, I can give final numbers for that one. But it, it was neat to see the community come together, and I had the opportunity to take Tony with me as my plus one. He's, he's, he's very outgoing, very friendly. I think he had a good time. So it was neat. He got to meet some people, and he got to, had to interact with the community, so it was great. So I'm grateful for that opportunity. And those, those ladies over there, they, they did an awesome job. It was really neat to see, once again, you know, anytime there's some type of a fundraiser, this community just somehow, I know we've heard people talking about how we're in an economic downturn and people don't have anything, but when something like that comes up, people somehow come together and they raise money, and they, they help out where they can. And then one thing, just to kind of go back off what we opened up with. And then one thing, just to kind of go back off what we opened up with, if there's anybody out there who is really that desperate and need of food, the Christian Food Warehouse, Cindy Fister, she, she's doing a good job over there. So if, if there's anybody out there who really needs that, reach out to her, she will help you guys. So, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. City administrators' report, please.
Your Honor, I have no report, other than to say thank you for the honor of coming back and serving you. Thank the employees that I care a lot about for the privilege of working with them and embracing the time that we had together. That was the reason I came back, and I feel that we accomplished some good things. And you have a good team. You have a great leadership team. You have an excellent employee base, and I hope you take care of them and be good stewards for them, because they work very hard for this community. Thank you so much for the budget, the experience with that. I had that vision for a long time, and you helped me accomplish that. So, thank you for everything. It's been a wonderful, wonderful eight months, and I feel very, very comfortable leaving people that I care about in the hands of Tony Tolstad. He'll do a very good job for the city and the city of Riverton, and the citizens, and the employees especially. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Courtney. I, I appreciate the effort that you put into this, and grateful that you were, you're available for us, and could, because I can, I, every day, I look back and thought, I didn't have Courtney, this is what I'd be doing today. And, and so, and so that was, that was really nice. I appreciate all the effort that you had and, and your insight and energy, and we couldn't have done it, we couldn't have done it as nicely without you. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind, but what, you made it work really, really, really good for us. So, if you.
Meeting?
This may be her last meeting.
Gee, her bags are packed. She's on her way.
And, and so.
Are we doing a special meeting on the 31st or something?
We are. Well, we are going to do something on the 30th, right?
Yes.
And so we are going to have this meet and greet on Monday night, the 30th, and, and so Courtney will be there, and Tony will be there, and everybody can say goodbye to Courtney and hello to Tony.
We, Your Honor, I, I spoke to Mr. Tolstad again today. We spoke yesterday. We were kind of feeling uncomfortable about what position we had that week when he stepped in, and, and we're a good team. I think it's going to work out real well. We've put everything on a calendar of what the employees can expect, what the citizens can, can expect, and we worked out a real good calendar for him for the first three days.
So, so this is, this has impressed me that we've had basically a month of transition. And while Tony hasn't been here in person, I know he and Courtney have been in contact with each other almost on a daily basis, and, and you notice that his name is now included in all the email traffic. And so he is seeing all that activity. He's watching us tonight. He's, you know, participating from that standpoint, and so he's going to have, he's going to have it all ready to go when he shows up. And I think this is going to be a really nice, smooth, easy transition, and I've had the opportunity to visit with him a couple of times myself. I just, I just think staff's going to be excited. If you, you know, you take a look at Douglas right now, and, you know, they're in the mourning stage. They're, they're losing their guy, and, and he had great staff, and they all stayed there all the time he was there. And, and his finance director was elected the number-one finance director in the state, and, and so he's very supportive of his staff, and he, and he understands that, that, you know, it's, everybody working together is what gets it done. I, I don't see, I don't see in him at all any ideas of, of personal superiority or anything like that. He is, he is going to be, he's a well-educated guy. He's got lots of, lots of education to draw on. He's got good experience. You know, he ran an airport. He's, he's been a community, he's been a city administrator in a couple of different communities, and, and he's so excited to be here, and, and is, really wants to stay here, too. He's, he says he hopes his kids graduate from Central Wyoming College. So he's got a long-range view for the city of Riverton, and we're pretty excited that we've got a good guy. So, I hope you, those of you who had an opportunity to visit with him last weekend when he was here, and those of you who haven't had an opportunity to visit with him yet, he may be here again. His family's moving this weekend. He's already bought a house.
He's my neighbor.
He's your neighbor. And, and so my guess is he'll, he'll be here this weekend again. He's, then he goes back to Douglas to finish out his last week, but he's leaving his family here. So, they've, they've made the trip. So there should be, there may be an opportunity this weekend. So you didn't get to see him this weekend, Lance?
Didn't.
Okay. So there may be an opportunity this weekend for you and Holly to, to get, to get with him and spend a little bit of time before he shows up, but then keep in mind, Monday night, the 30th, we're going to have this meet and greet, and I'm sure a lot of people want to come and meet him, and, and he's a, he's a, he's a nice guy, personable guy, easy to get along with, I think. The city's going to do really good under his direction and leadership. That's sort of my comments, I guess. Okay?
Your Honor, I, I'm sorry to add just one more thing. I just wanted to, I know everybody said it, but I am very grateful for everything that you've done, Courtney. I, I really think you've done a great job. So, I appreciate it. I didn't realize this was your last meeting, at least as our interim. Makes sense, I guess, but.
Yeah, yeah. And Mia and I are going to do the buzz in the morning, and Courtney's not even going to do that. She is, she's, she is really winding down.
You know, Your Honor, that's not my fault. I look at this like right before an election, when things get real quiet, and no one knows who, knows who the new guy's going to be.
Yes.
My phone's not ringing, I'm getting sales email, I mean, nothing's happening. I'm going around asking everybody, can I do something? What can I do? My last goal, I do have to say this, is, it's a phenomenon that someone that has a very organized mind has a very disorganized office. My last goal is to clean Dave Paskett's office. I get that opportunity next Monday. He's going hunting. So it's, it's all worked out perfectly.
Oh, man.
Yes.
I would not, I would not touch that with a tin foil. If you.
I've seen it. That's a, that's a, that's a golf word.
If you, but, but if you, if you just can't stand not cleaning something, you've got a key to my office.
Your Honor, Courtney started it, so I'd like to continue here. I'd like to approach the council and see if we could hire Courtney part-time to work for me.
Clean your office.
Well, that, and I have a number of other duties within that office that need to get done.
Uh-huh.
So we may have to do a budget amendment.
Yeah.
Well, she cleaned it, so you're going to have to call her anyway to find out where she put everything.
Exactly.
That would be, that would be, that would be it, if, if, you know, yeah, it's just that I know that there's nothing in my office that I need that bad. I just don't know what to do with it. So, so thank you, Courtney, for your service to the city, and we're, we're better off for, for your time that you spent with us. And even though it was a much longer period of time than what we originally thought, this has worked out, has worked out very, very well. We were able to accomplish, we were able to accomplish a lot of good things this, this summer, and look at all the ordinances that we've cleaned up and, and done good work on, and, and I think, I think this has been a really productive time period for the city of Riverton, and, and wouldn't have been possible if we'd hired somebody from, who didn't know what was going on, to come in here and try to make it work. And, and I, and I, and I don't think it would have been possible if we just had tried to do it with staff. We were, it took too long, and we would have all been dead. Okay? Exhausted.
Dead.
Exhausted. So, none of us may have survived that. We would, may have come in here with entirely brand-new senior staff. Well, that was great. Thank you, Courtney. So, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we're out of here at 8:52.